Good to go. Welcome you all to this morning's council meeting. And first, I'm going to call the meeting to order, and first we'll have a moment of reflection. Thank you. So next on the agenda is confirmation of the agenda, and I have no alterations that I'm aware of unless somebody else has something to add. I need a motion to confirm the agenda. Moved by Councilor Wilhelm, second by Councilor Eit. Any questions? Those in favor? That's carried. You can make a declaration of comfort or declaration of competing contemporary interest at this point in time or any time through the meeting. And we will move on to consent agenda. And on consent agenda, we have minutes and items five point one to five point one oh. Does anyone want to see anything pulled for discussion? Later in the meeting? Not seeing any hands. So I have a motion, council receives the consent agenda items five point one to five point one oh. And approves the October twenty one, two thousand and twenty one council minutes moved by Councilor Callum, second by Councilor McKenzie. Last chance for comments or questions. Seeing none, those in favor? And that's carried. Perfect. So next we have no public meetings, hearings, or delegations, but we do, we'll move on to staff reports. And number one is planning services. That will be Sally. Not sure if anyone else is joining here. Get Sally up on the screen here shortly. Not on yet? I say we can't do a whole lot till we get. It's going to be a second here, folks.
Well, so you can move it over to a panelist and come on, that'd be great.
And there she is.
Morning.
Morning Sally, we're ready for your report.
Very good, thank you. I'm just trying to grab my notes here. Just give me one second.
It's more corny. We're down to about two twenty five. Uh, this corner and issues. Forty acres.
Well, maybe that's what I was.
But on the corner there?
Well, no, it's just, I thought it was just, just past where Murray lives.
No, we don't have that. They have issues property.
Okay.
We got the bean farm done.
We're ready to go, Sally.
Thank you for that. Giving me the grace of time there. Good morning. Warden H. and the members of council. Today I'm bringing you a report and a schedule of the remaining tasks associated with completing the new official plan for the county. Sitting down to plot this schedule was a really valuable exercise, and generally speaking, the schedule estimates that the draft of the plan would be complete in and around March. With a public consultation unfolding through the summer months. Concurrent to that happening, staff would also be preparing a consultation that is specific to natural environment aspects of the official plan. And a consultation that is proposed to include a direct mailing to affected landowners. The opportunity for individual consultations for property owners. And various other methods that we've been putting together for the public at large to learn about and comment on that part of the plan specifically. The scheduled work plan in your package, it identifies that almost at almost all times throughout the next ten months, there's multiple actions and tasks happening in any given week. And it's prudent then, I think, that a second recommendation before you today is the hiring of a land use planner on a contract for the period of the year to be dedicated full time to this project. They would work closely with me to complete the tasks each week. And allow me to keep both the development program that we have running smoothly now and the official plan progressing each week. The scheduled work plan has been carefully thought out and reviewed in detail with many of the different people that you'll see there at the various stages along that Gantt chart. And that's to ensure that we've captured both the order of tasks, but also the duration of tasks as accurately as we can. Because it's, it's fairly clear in there, this is a really ambitious work plan. So coordinating with the finance team here at the county, it's, it's recommended that the cost for an additional planner be funded out of the levy stabilization reserve, and that recognizes that the project is ongoing. As, as we all know, it's really very much needed. And it's compliance driven. Updating those policies and being up to date and in, in compliance or in conformity with the, with the PPS is quite important. So additionally, it reflects the importance, like using the stabilization fund reflects the importance and ensuring that the costs don't affect the twenty twenty two levy. And that potentially the other items that should be fully considered throughout the budget process. So the final recommendation that I have for you today in my report is that council be provided with an education session. And that would be to fully understand the proposal so far that we've been working out for both the natural environment policies. And the techniques that we intend to use for consultation with landowners around the county. The natural environment is one of the final pieces for the draft official plan, and it's a topic, as you know, that has a fair amount of understandable concerns and things that we can work, work to resolve, and also a fair amount of misinformation around it. It makes sense to me then, that at least, at least that we would provide council with an opportunity to learn more about the topic, like in detail. And bring forward all the questions that you have. And I think the session would not only strengthen our ability to prepare a really thorough consultation for the public, but also council's foundation for decision making on, on the official plan. So perhaps a date, either next month or January could be, could be planned out. That covers really the three items and recommendations that I have in my report, so I'm going to turn it back over to the warden.
Thanks Sally. So we're going to open it up here for questions. So Sally and I did have a meeting last week, I believe it was for hour and a half about the natural heritage plan. And, and actually Deputy Warden Agus was part of that. And we did talk about the concerns that were going to come up by the rate pairs and the landowners. And I think Sally actually thought I was trying to shoot the messenger, but I was actually preparing her for what was going to actually be the questions and the concerns raised by all the residents. So I think we have a reasonably big, good plan to deal with this, but I'm going to open it up for questions from council. Counselor Hurlick.
Oh, thanks here, Warden. Yeah. At the end of the day, nobody wants to see more money spent. We all try and be frugal and respectful. And sad though, I did see the amount of properties that are affected, and this is very real. At least once a week, probably every other week. So yeah, it's something we gotta keep moving, but I, I do like that we are taking a lot of steps here. It's nice to see them in a place here. It's something that we have to do.
Thanks, Counselor Hurlick. Uh, Counselor Wilhelm.
A couple of things. I'd like to report. Thank you, Sally. And I think that it is necessary that we do hire a contract person to get this OPA finished. Like, it's been dragging on and it's time to really dedicate some resources and get it done. And I've said all along that we need to have it done by this term of council. And that's what it takes, then so be it. We do have the funds to fund the extra FTE. My only comment, and perhaps Warden can get Tyler to answer. I see this extends out to October next year to be submitted and approved by council. And then lame duck council could play a role. So I was concerned whether the council at that time may have the authority to submit that to the province.
I'm going to let our clerk Tyler answer that question.
Perfect. So through the Warden, the lame duck calculation would be from August nineteenth at two P M to November fourteenth at midnight. So it's applicable. I don't believe that the OP plan will play a role. There are four restrictions. Those restrictions are appointment or removal from office and of any officer for municipality. The hiring or dismissal of any employee of the municipality. The disposition of any real or personal property of the municipality which has a value exceeding fifty thousand. Or making any expenditures or occurring any other liability which exceeds fifty thousand. The exceptions to that are if anything is approved at the twenty twenty two budget. So it'd be my understanding that the OP plan as it progresses through that lame duck council could make a decision with respect to the official plan.
Did that answer your question?
Yes, thank you.
Other questions? Comments? Counselor Eit.
Um, thank you, Warden. My, my concern is that Sally's going to work with the new people, and we have all new planning staff. That for the two years after, they're going to have to get up to speed. We know the last, how many years? Somebody help me out. Six years we've been doing this? It seems like forever. Um, Alan and Mark went through it and, and we worked on it for three years. And then they're gone, and now I, if Sally and the new person who's not going to stay here, do it, our planners already, I think, I don't want to say this incorrectly. If you have a fifty acre farm and you want to sever a house off, you can't because your farm's not big enough. That's not, that's not right. I think our planning has to be more involved to, to make sure they know when this is over, what went on. And maybe Sally has that in a plan somewhere, if she could elaborate on the rest of the planning department. Catching up and knowing what's going on.
Okay, I'm going to let Sally answer that. We did have a brief discussion around that last week one day. So Sally, do you want to answer that?
Yeah, thank you for the question. I think, um, the staff that we have right now, the four planners that we have on the ground, even though one is quite new. They're all quite engaged and up to speed. They're learning so much about the four communities that we have in Perth County and we have great discussions and lots of property inquiries to keep us using best practices and trying to figure out the best way forward on some of these policies. Using the official plan the way it is today is quite challenging. With the things in there that are out of date. And so it's giving us so much food for thought to figure out and lay out how the policy could work better in the meantime. So that being said, what I was envisioning was that we would hire a planner who perhaps has experience with rolling out a new official plan. And when we did the round of hiring, the last round of hiring, there were a couple of candidates in there that have that experience. So you know, if, if, if something or one of someone like that with that kind of experience was interested in this position, then it would really help. And it's so important that we keep the development program going because it's really starting to run and it's really working now. And so I hesitate to take one of the four planners from there to work on the OP, but they are the most intimately familiar with Perth at the moment. So it really depends on who we can find to do this project. But at the end of the day, I'm still quite involved with the official plan on a day to day basis. I just simply can't keep the the service that we're providing to lower tiers. The review on subdivisions and some consents, which I am, you know, this position, the manager's position is the approval of thirty four. Things that the, the county needs to do operationally, like budget processes and senior management commitments. It's just, it's just such a drain on the official plan project to have me being the only one working on it. But at the same time, I will, I will be heavily involved every week. I just need someone else in here who can do some of the legwork. And who can help me to manage the consultations with landowners, in, in particular, in respect to the natural environment piece. So one of the things there in this Gantt chart that you'll see is really dedicating ourselves to helping people arrive at at least a level of knowledge with the natural environment policies that they can understand what, what they mean and how it might affect them on their property. And what does the map show on their property? And is that correct? And how does it, how does it influence or what is it telling us? So we want to be able to do that stuff one on one. And it's going to require some, some people. It's just like I said, this is an ambitious project. It is probably one and a half people and the other half is me.
Okay, and Doug actually mentioned something else. And that was about a fifty acre parcel. And severed off a house. Do you want to try to answer that? Like, I would think if you had a fifty acre parcel. And I bought it off you, and that house became surplus, I'd be able to sever that off.
Well, that is a particular policy that we don't currently have where the farm size is limited, you know, with if the farm size is then contemplated that it's limiting whether or not you're eligible for a surplus farm policy. It's actually the type of policy that uses land use planning principles to limit how many surplus farm, or how much surplus farm dwelling severances we may have in the county, you know, over time. Now, whether or not it's the right one for Perth. We should probably put it in there and let the public consult on it. There, we don't have it in there now. Another example would be when a farm has two houses on it. Or has been previously severed. Those could be used as eligibility criteria, and those, those are used in other regions, other provinces. And those, to me, are more planning based ways to reduce the number or limit the number of, of farm fragmentation across the county, if the county chooses to do that. I think those are probably more justified ways to limit severances than say the policy that we removed more recently, which was where the surplus, where the home farm is located and, and whether or not that's in the county. So these are examples of ways of policies rather that you can use that are land use based to reduce the fragmentation of farmland. And I think it's prudent to put them in as proposed and let the public give us feedback on that.
Counselor, did that answer your question?
Well, it's kind of like, do we have, now, now we're just, I just heard you say, we don't want too many severed farmhouse in the country. It's what I heard you say. Maybe I'm wrong. This is a fifty acre farm. He was going to sell forty eight acres to the adjoining landowner. The planner said, no, you don't have enough land. So I, I just, I guess I'm caught between, we allow farmhouse severances, but we don't want too many? Is that what we're saying? Fragmented land? That just kind of caught me. I thought a farmhouse severance met the criteria. You owned it for ten years. You sold it to somebody who was eligible. It could be done, but now I'm, I'm kind of getting a different vibe.
No, that's not what I said. What I, because I don't have a personal opinion on these. My position is always land use planning based. And what I'm suggesting is that there are policies that can be used if a county so chose to limit the number of surplus farm dwelling severances that are possible across the county, if that was something that you wanted to do. Because in Perth County, there's certainly a history of conflict around whether or not this is the right way to be you know, dividing farmland, creating residential lots and family. Then and where we have arrived at today is that we want to allow these in Perth County. That's the policy that's been, that has sort of won the day or is in the official plan right now. So in doing so, is there an interest in allowing them under certain circumstances? Is there an interest in adding policies that are really sort of land use based or planning based? In, in reducing them or, or not? And I think it's important that we have the conversation and decide what is best for Perth County. So there's going to be lots of surplus farm dwelling severance opportunities out there. Um, and if you look at some of the other counties around us, they've been doing them for over a decade, and there seems to be no shortage of them. So we'll find a similar pattern here in Perth County, I suspect. So it's a question, when we're putting our new plan into place, are we looking at other specific criteria? That's, that's actually based in land use planning to limit them. Or not? And I think it's, I think it's important that, that those options are put on the table and then you can decide.
Thanks, Alex. So Counselor Wilhelm and Deputy Warden Agus.
Uh, yes, thank you. I believe it was last year that in Perth South, we had a, a twenty five acre parcel. And that was sold off to a larger firm, and they severed a house off that twenty five acres. And so I'm not quite sure how that would affect a fifty acre, if you can do it on twenty five.
We don't currently have a policy that limits it based on the size of the retained lands. So.
Deputy Warden Agus.
I was just going to get back to the point of what Counselor Eit was asking. Counselor Eit was asking today if that house could be severed, and according to our policy today, we can. But you started talking about in the future. Well, that's fine when we get to that, but right now, what can be done today? So that house can be severed today, as I understand it, off that fifty acre parcel. Is that correct?
Yep, we, yes, we don't currently have a policy that restricts eligibility based on the size of retained.
Right, thank you.
Just my thoughts on that. I'm not sure why you'd want to restrict it on those fifties or twenties. Housing's in a crisis now. The farmhouse is already there. You're not using up more agricultural land because the house is there. So the more houses you can save, it'd be better in the long term, not only for us as trying to collect tax revenue, but for the schools and the churches and everything else. Anyway, that's just my point. Any other questions or comments here? I don't see any. I do have a motion here, but before I read this motion, I'm going to ask a quick question of council. The second recommendation was council provide direction to proceed to hire a planner to be focused on the official plan. So there's no word, mention of the word contract, and there's no mention of time limit. Do you want to see that added to the motion? Before I read it, do you want me just to read the motion? Deputy Warden Agus.
Should be added to the motion. From the time period and they're on a contract.
Counselor Wilhelm or Counselor McKenzie, sorry.
I, I could agree with the contract. I guess I would be a little hesitant to, to restrict the time period, or at least to have it that if we get to the end of the time period, we need a bit more time that that could be negotiated extended ahead.
Other comments on that? Deputy Warden Agus, sorry. I'm looking around here and I'm just missing you in the bottom corner.
I think that we need a time limit because, as we know, and things can go over and, and when, if it does go over that year, then we decide in the year what's left and, and how much and everything else, because I think you need a time. Because as Counselor Eit already indicated, we've been at this for years, and I don't, I don't want this going on for years any longer. So I think we need to put a time limit on it, and at that time, we can address it again.
Other comments or questions? And I'm going to re paraphrase this motion. So I'm going to read this off, and then you can slap me around after I've been reading it. Motion says that Perth County Council received the report, new official plan update. And that council provide direction to proceed to hire a planner to be focused on the new official plan in a contract position. And I'm going to say until the official plan is completed. And that the position be funded through the levy stabilization reserve fund. And that council provide direction to prepare an education session, session for council on the proposed policy mapping and engagement program regarding the natural environment system in the new official plan. Does anybody dislike the way I worded that? Deputy Warden Agus.
I still would like the dates because you've left it very open ended, and this could go on for another three years.
Well, I'm pretty sure it shouldn't go on three years, but so I've read that motion. I'm going to start with, do I have a mover and a seconder on that motion that I read? Counselor McDermott is going to move it. Do I have a seconder? Counselor Matt Duncan. Okay, so we have one person made their comments. Last chance for comments on that motion. And we're going to put it to a vote. Counselor Eit.
It also states in this somewhere that we have to be done by the end of next year. So that puts an end date on it, really. Because we're somewhere in this, or in this writing, we have to be done. I remember Mr. Wilhelm asked Tyler, so there is an end date on it of November. Correct me if I'm wrong, it's in there.
Is that correct, Sally?
That's what, that's what time it would take for us to complete all these with no deviations and no interruptions. I can't promise you that.
Deputy Warden Agus.
That may be true in the report, but that's not what the final motion is saying. And it's what the motion says is what council goes by. So if it's not in there in the motion, that means it's not, it's not part of it.
My motion said until the completion of the official plan.
I still go back, it has to be in the wording of the motion. We've got caught that way before, that we make a motion and it's not in there what was really defined. Just because it's in the report, that doesn't mean that it's, it's going to happen.
Okay, so I do have a motion. It's the movement seconded. We're going to put it to a vote, and we're going to see where it goes. Those in favor of that motion? One, two, three, four. I've got to do number counts now. Two, four, six, eight, nine, ten. That motion passes. Ten day. Okay. That's the end of that discussion for now. So you will look into with our HR people and get working on this contract position, Sally?
This afternoon.
Perfect. Actually, we'll let Marion in here later, so I'll run it by her up the flagpole as well. The sooner we can go on, the better. Okay. Next. Thanks, Sally. Next, we're going to move on to corporate services, and we have the forestry inspectors report, and that would be Tyler.
Perfect. So through the Warden in front of council, today is the September twenty twenty one forestry inspector's report prepared by Marvin Smith. Varyn completed four inspections to his response to the submission of an NOI or most intent. And two is a response to a question from a landlord. If there's any questions or inquiries, please let me know, and I can forward those off to him.
Okay, any questions on that report? I only got one comment on it. Rutting was normal. I find that hard to believe with the twenty inches of rain we've had.
Well, it's normal for having twenty inches of rain.
Late August, like I find that one kind of puzzling. Maybe it's normal for twenty inches of rain. I had a guy in wanting to log my bush and I wouldn't let him anywhere near. Because he was going to rupture Jesus out of it and I got a hardwood bush. Anyway, I have a need a motion to accept or approve that report. Counselor McKenzie, second by Counselor Wellhaim. Those in favor, that's carried. And we will move on to MSC budget report. And we're going to start off with POA. And if we could get Linda on there. And I see her on the screen.
Here I am.
Okay, morning Linda.
That was gonna work.
Ready for your report for MSSC.
Right. The timing is always a little off with MSSC budget. I understand council hasn't approved the county budget yet, but MSSC requires that we submit some something. So I have done so. It's very high level. It's for information purposes. At this point only, as far as I'm concerned, I still need your approval before anything's written in stone. I also have provided you with an operational update. Charges are returning to pre pandemic numbers. The fines collected are much better than last year. And the distribution I've provided by the three municipalities whereby we divide the revenue. Um, I would be very happy to answer any questions.
Okay, questions for Linda on her report? Counselor McDermott.
Uh, just a quick question on some of the things when you're doing the forecasts in the future for the um, the percent of the revenue that each of the three get, it changes. Is when you give the revenue, oh, is it based on where the tickets are done? Or do we pick or is there a different way that we appropriate the revenue?
Thank you. Um, when we distribute the revenue, it's uh, divided between St. Mary's, Stratford and Perth County. And then once we have the Perth County revenue determined, that's distributed to our local partners by weighted assessment.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Other questions? Yeah, I'm thinking actually by the end of the year, we're going to be above the two thousand and nineteen level because that was just to the end of September. Anyway, I have a motion Perth County receives the POA operational update and MSSC budget report for information moved by Counselor Casenberg. Seconded by Counselor Hurley. Last chance for questions. I don't see any those in favor of that motion that is carried. Perfect. Thanks, Linda.
Thank you.
Next, we are going to move on to archives. And we can get, just so you're all aware, Laurie's, our CIO is on by Zoom today. She has a bad cold and she wasn't going to pass the screening, so she's working from home. And there's Laurie just showed her face on the screen. Okay, there's Betty Jo. Yep, okay, Betty Jo, we're ready for your report.
Okay, thank you, Warden. Good morning, everyone. So, you know, kind of what Linda said about the the status of the archives budget in the report that you have before us that before you rather, this is our submission for the MSSC meeting, which takes place in two weeks. And so, of course, council will be reviewing the budget in detail later. I will just say though, that the overall budget increase, as things stand right now, uh, it would be one point nine percent, not the one point six percent for next year. That's my type of error in the body of the report and I apologize for that. With council's approval, I'll make that correction in the MSSC version of the report as well. Um, some activities that are planned for next year are described in the report as well briefly. Uh, thank you all for your time. I'm working through you. I'd be happy to provide more detail or respond to any questions that council may have about the report.
Okay, questions for Betty Jo, Counselor Wellhaim?
A question on revenue for twenty-two, it's more than double what it's been in the past. You must be planning something on that.
That's actually finance, um, advised that it would be best to pull some of the expenses for next year out of our general reserves, so about a thousand dollars for uh, public events relating to the fiftieth anniversary and I think around six thousand for the testing of the online version of our archive management software. So it's not revenue in the sense that we'll be collecting more money for photocopies and that sort of thing. It's it's just pulling that money from reserve.
Other questions? Comments? Okay, I have a motion Perth County Council receives the MSSC two thousand and twenty-two budget report for Stratford Perth Archives. And the council approves the report for submission to MSSC budget meeting of November the eighteenth, two thousand twenty-one. Moved by Counselor Wellhaim, seconded by Counselor McDermott. Last chance for questions. Those in favor? And that's carried. Perfect. Thanks, Betty Jo.
Thank you.
Okay, next we are going to move on to the Q three variants and year end projections and I'm looking for Mr. Corey to show up on the screen. You'll be in better humor now. The Leafs actually won a couple. Half of Vegas were missing.
All I heard was the Wheat Leafs won a couple, so.
If I said you'll be in better humor, the Leafs finally won a couple.
For sure, for sure. And Montreal is still losing, so. Uh, so. Yes, thank you, Warden and council. The report in front of you is the Q three variants and year projections report. Uh, the first part of the report is the capital budget. Um, within the attachment two of the report, you'll notice that in the body of the report, it says six point nine, but we're projecting to spend about seven point one million of our eleven point three million dollar capital budget. Uh, to note, uh, some items were delayed, line fifty-six was delayed until the future year as well as waiting for potential funding related to elevator. Uh, has you notice a significant variance between what was projected and what what the actuals are to date. Uh, so we're looking to spend about sixty-three percent of our total capital budget in two thousand twenty-one. Um, it is noted as well as Public Works brought last council meeting that the road projects are looking to be about half a million dollar under budget uh, from what was projected in the two thousand twenty-one year. Uh, as we can move on to the operating budget. To note, uh, it's looking that we're looking to have a small surplus of about forty-one thousand dollars uh, in two thousand twenty-one. Uh, within the attachment one of the report, you'll notice that to date, we spent about seventy percent of our budget. Uh, but by the end of the year, we're closing close to what we budgeted for the two thousand twenty-one year. Uh, noted in there is that of that, the surpluses are being identified in economic development and tourism as well as archives and council with deficits being shown in the the planning division as well as non departmental, which essentially is our what we budget for write offs versus what we're forecasting to be actuals uh, related to taxation. Uh, also within there, we have spent COVID dollars of about five hundred fourteen thousand dollars. Uh, the province has provided another one hundred eighty-four thousand for the two thousand twenty-one year. Uh, we're projecting to have about two hundred thousand dollars of COVID money towards the two thousand twenty-two year. Uh, and as it further to that, the only other item is to note is that forty-one thousand looking to put it at into levy stabilization reserve. Uh, and the balance of that reserve is sitting just under one point five million dollars. Uh, but we're still in the situation where we're losing another hundred fifty-three thousand in OMPF to bring us to for two thousand twenty-two year about eight hundred sixty-seven thousand dollars. Uh, if there's any other questions with the report, I'll be happy to answer them.
Thanks, Corey. Questions for Corey on his report? Not seeing any hands, but I'm glad you clarified that because it had there announced by the province to be one hundred fifty-three thousand, but I was, I think you missed the word reduced.
Yeah, it's in the previous sentence of the reduction in the one hundred fifty.
Anyway, uh, that stops when it gets down to five hundred thousand, am I correct?
This, no, our component of this is all transition. That stops when we get hit zero.
Okay. Because I think summer's cut stopped five hundred. Okay, that answers that question. So there's no questions for Corey on this? I have a motion Perth County Council receives the two thousand and twenty-one Q three variants with year end projections report. Moved by Counselor Cullum, second by Counselor Casenberg. Last chance for questions. Those in favor? Carried. Perfect. Moving on. Thanks, Corey. So we're moving on to paramedic services and Mike has joined us here. And we'll start with the Ministry of Health Response Time Performance. Take it away, Mike.
Thank you. And for the next one, Corey may join us again to answer some questions. Yeah, yeah, yeah. Okay, so through the Warden, thank you. Um, so we have two reports going forward for you that you've had an opportunity to have a little look at. Uh, the first one is our response time performance annual plan renewal. So this is at this point a housekeeping item that we put forward last year within one of our reports. And we're bringing back again this year because each year we both we report on the response times, which are our requirement of under the ambulance act for us to report on. And we also set, the council has set the level of response times several years ago and we bring that forward each year. So there's no current recommendations to make any changes. Um, our consultant that is looking at the deployment plan um, may have some findings within there that they may bring forward and we can take a look at in the future. However, at this point, no changes to our plan. And this is just highlighting that we've brought it back for towards the to the ministry and renewed our plan again for another year. And you'll see on the page two of, I don't have the page numbers of the larger package in front of me, but the second page of this report, you'll see that we're reporting to the end of August because that's the data that was billowed to us when we were writing this report. Uh, so with any, without any questions.
Questions for Mike on his report? Counselor Casenberg.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Warden. Uh, thank you, Mr. Adair for the report. Um, I'm just looking at the performance standard and and there's that little thing that says target. And so it looks to me like we've dropped below the target for the sudden cardiac arrest patients and also for the CTAS one category. Um, is there something, an action plan that you're working on to try to remedy that or bridge that gap to get us back to the target?
Well, there's, I really have, I have two things to highlight here with respect to that. One is, I guess it's fortunate that, um, you know, when you're looking at sudden cardiac arrest, the actual like pool of data, the numbers that we're looking at so far to the state this year are thirty-one cases to the end of August. Um, so you will see high fluctuations up and down in that category. The other piece to that is we do not have a mechanism in place at this point where we're sharing information with the uh, fire service. So and when we look at tiered response and this metric is really, when does a defibrillator get to the side of the patient? So it's the first responder that arrives there. So in terms of, I guess, um, from a data sample size, but also from a um, uh, from a data collection piece, you do see those fluctuations up and down in sudden cardiac arrest. Now, having said that, um, right now, through modernization funding, the project that was led by Oxford County. And we're doing some comparison in terms of performance between elegant Oxford and Perth County. We will be looking at, um, the response time performance plan as well and seeing if there's any kind of recommendations that may come out of that. So that's where we're at in terms of that. In terms of the C task one, it's the same thing. We've had fifty-five cases to August thirty-first. Um, and as an example in comparison, even the year prior to that, we've only, we had, we had one hundred and fourteen C task one patients in Perth County in twenty um, in twenty-twenty. So again, the sample size um, is relatively low for the the thousands of calls that we do every year. Um, which is good because it means our population is doing well, but it is something that we would certainly need to monitor. Um, and you will see those fluctuations throughout the year as well.
Any further questions, Counselor Casenberg? Not seeing any. Anybody else have any questions? In all honesty, if I had sudden cardiac arrest at my property, there isn't a prayer's chance you're going to be there in six minutes either from St. Mary's or Stratford. Like, it's just not going to happen just because of distance drive.
Yeah, through the Warden, that's the other piece is the, um, it, you know, with, and I guess that if you drill down into my comments about the sample size um, or the the number of patients that we have that are in sudden cardiac arrest, um, it will vary between the different communities. But of course, you'd see more cases in the urban centers only because the population is there as well. So all of those things will need to be considered, yeah.
Okay, I have a motion here. Perth County Council receives a Ministry of Health Response Time Performance Plan Annual Renewal Report for information moved by Counselor McKenzie, seconded by Counselor McDermott. Last chance for questions. Those in favor, that's carried. Okay, and then we'll move on to your second report.
Yes, so the second report is the Paramedic Services Municipal Shared Services Committee Financial Forecast and Projections for twenty-one and twenty-two. This report is the one that would go to municipal shared services later this month. And so it comes to council first, of course, and it's a bit of a preview of our business plan as well. Um, in the, in the order of how we do things, this report comes out first. Uh, so this is a bit of a forecast into that as well. So I'll just provide you with some of the highlights and then, of course, open the floor to questions. Um, so I guess the first thing I just wanted to sort of highlight is that last year, when we were working through this report, as this council would recall, there was, we were working on correcting an underfunded error in our part-time staffing hours. And for a variety of different reasons, that error has been subsequently corrected. And we're pleased that the province has not only funded that their portion of that error last year, but had carried it over into this year and so that it is base funding now. So I just wanted to clear that up as well and just report back on that. In terms of some of the sections of this report, I broke it down into a few different areas. So the response and mobile integrated health team as well as response to COVID nineteen. As it did last year, we are spending more money than we originally budgeted for certain, certain activities. And in providing those activities, we continue to work with all of our system partners to make sure that we're funded um, as much as possible. And we're pleased to say that, number one, the mobile integrated health team has been fully funded through the province as well as our partner in Stratford. And in addition to that, And in addition to that, uh, the uh, healthcare alliance, the current Perth healthcare alliance had provided us with some funding. This year with respect to that. In terms of the COVID um, expenses, we continue to track those as we have all been doing all along. And uh, we do have money that uh, has been allocated by the province for those uh, particular uh, activities or items. And we'll continue to. I guess in close invoice or um, uh, share those costs with the province and uh, for uh, reimbursement and we're hopeful that. That will uh, continue uh, throughout this year and potentially into next, depending on what's happening with the status of COVID. In terms of some of the um, issues uh, and, and challenges that we've been experiencing that uh, create the. Cost for uh, COVID in terms of the response, we're looking at. Uh, provincial um, federal levels legislation, uh, the quick changes, things like directive number six, all puts pressures on us. Um. We carried over sick time last year to this year so that uh. Uh, people would have a bit of a bank of sick time where they could. Uh, use that if they ended up in quarantine. Um, so that has caused some pressures. That's also created. A situation, not just in that case, but our staff are, like everywhere in healthcare are. Are uh, finding that the value of time off is increasing, whereas in twenty twenty, we saw people leaving vacation. At the table, like at the end of the year or this year, everyone wants to use all their vacation. Everyone wants, um, everyone's. Uh, being very diligent and using their sick time if they have a cold or a sniffle like that type of thing where maybe previously in, in former days, they would have come to work. Um, we're making sure that we're taking uh, that time off. Um, and I, we're continuing to uh, this year, uh, do specialized training where required. Whether that be for our uh, PPE or revisiting uh, how to use appropriate PPE. Um, and investing in a psychological support of our responders. So those are some of the types of things that we continue to do. Uh, we also are providing uh, human resources, health human resources to the. Um, we did early on for things like decanting of nursing homes or responding to COVID, I guess, emergencies. Um, and uh, those uh, types of things, we continue to partner with our uh, local health uh, system partners if, if, uh, if required. In terms of the mobile integrated health. Um, that program, there will be a report that's coming forward to council um, about that and uh, some of the statistics that are surrounding that. Um, in the next, uh, over the next month at some point. But uh, that is something that, as I mentioned before, is continuing to be funded and also is helping to support COVID. Uh, response, but also our community in many different other ways. Uh, so combined to date, when I wrote this report, we're sitting around four hundred and fifty thousand dollars. Of these costs that I was just uh, mentioning. And again, those are the ones that we expect to be fully funded through different programs. So then moving on to special funding, um, I just provided uh, and some examples of funding that uh, will be offsetting. The money that we have been spending and they're included there. And I think I've already mentioned them. The only additional ones are modernization funding. So for. Some of our programming this year and into next, uh, that will be impacted is. Um, the funding to grants that we applied to through paramedic services last year and with the county and uh, you can see those numbers there. In terms of um. Resource considerations for next year, um, but. We have included in here are things that we're thinking of um, moving forward in our business plan. And like I said before, you know, our business plan isn't out yet and of course that would. Any changes would be approved by council, but this is the highlight, here are some of the highlights. The first one is looking at, um. Looking at doing an analysis of our part-time equivalent hours, which are used for a variety of reasons. They are used to backfill sick time. They're used to backfill. Uh, for uh, things like WCIB or for providing training for staff. Uh, peer support team like all those types of things. And um, with, with that in mind, um, we will be advancing in our business plan or request to increase the um. The, we'll call it the full-time equivalent, but those, those hours allocated for particular activities um, that I just mentioned and beyond. To a point nine FTE, so from seventeen point five one to eighteen point three nine. Um, additional staff positions, uh, these, there are two positions that are. That were um, brought to council in twenty nineteen. As part of the um, business plan to move forward and at that time, I know there was approval, but we certainly delayed last year with that. Error that happened in terms of um, the, the part-time equivalent hours to fix that. And one of them is a supervisory position for the. Mobile integrated health team as well as one of them is for a logistics coordinator. So those are two positions that. Uh, I think we can have a dialogue with respect to uh, when we bring the business plan forward to council and um, uh, and, and uh, hear your thoughts on that. In terms of the committee uh, paramedic program, one of the things that just happened recently that wasn't included in this report when I even wrote it. Was that we just had heard an announcement of um, that long-term care. Uh, branch of the provincial government has announced um, significant funding for. All paramedic services in the realm of community paramedicine. And so that would um, maybe uh, we can look at that as an option in terms of uh, funding a supervisor for that program because. Uh, it depends on what that money looks like, but that is uh, the perfect uh, type of thing and opportunity that we could take and leverage. Um, because it's a uh, well, for, to achieve the goals of what that program would be um, in the future. WCIB rates um, is another pressure for paramedic services over the past uh, few years and. I think Cory Bridges is on uh, the uh, program here and will be available to answer some questions as well. But WCIB rates are something that have been uh, increasing for um, our paramedic service as well as all other paramedic services across Ontario. And um, our uh, WCIB um, cost for this year. Um, were, are forecasted at about four hundred and forty-five thousand dollars that um. Will need to access the reserves for. And again, Cory can explain how all of that works on my, and on our behalf. Um, and then finally, uh, we talk a little bit about um, the uh, cap. The capitals expenditures uh, for next year and what we're looking at doing. So we have. Uh, some replacement ambulance units, which council's already aware of and has approved uh, previously. And so no changes to that. We also um, have in our schedule to replace uh, two four-wheel drive or all-wheel drive uh, pickup trucks, which are commander vehicles at, in their, I believe, seventh year. And um, finally, we will be exploring the uh, possibility of adding one vehicle to our fleet, which would be a sports utilities type of vehicle. That would uh, enable our um, that would enable our fleet to have. One pickup truck for the supervisor, one pickup truck for the. Uh, mobile integrated health team. And then one more response capable vehicle for um, when one of those other two vehicles are either in for service. Or for uh, our command staff, uh, meaning either the deputy or the assistant deputy to actually respond to scenes and uh, to support the paramedics. Um, in a different way and more frequently. So that's one of the asks that we'll be bringing, bringing forward to council this year in terms of um, uh, capital uh, budgeting. In terms of the AED uh, program, the um, uh, public access defibrillation program. We were looking at doing some work and we've started that this year. However, we are carrying it over into next year with the uh, time constraints and the workload with COVID. Uh, we did put that on the back burner and we are, are deferring that to next year. So that's something that you'll see that is a carry, carried forward in the capital plan from this year that will carry forward into next year. Um, and then finally, um, I do talk a little bit about here about training and really next year, we will be focusing on three key things, which is the continuing of professional development. From a clinical perspective of our staff. Um, but then the other area is leadership development for our frontline supervisors. Um, and uh, those that are interested in uh, being leaders in our organization. And then finally, on uh, continuing to do the good work that we've been doing with our peer support team. And that will come out in a future report in terms of some statistics about how our staff are using that team and accessing it. And making sure that we uh, continue to train. Our peer supporters because they're doing a fantastic job and having a uh, positive impact on, on our staff. Um. And uh, finally, I highlight the fact that we are going into collective bargaining and I know that this council is also aware of that, but it was something to put into the report for our shared services. And with that. I conclude my comments. I'm not sure that Cory may have anything else to add before we open to questions or how that might work.
Cory, you got anything to add about numbers or anything on here?
Uh, nothing, only that uh, when we presented the three-year operating budget last year, we indicated that uh, the percentage of uh. Approximately three point seven percent was what we indicated to uh, shared services in the twenty twenty-one budget.
Okay. Questions for Mike or Cory? Very thorough report. I can't imagine there'd be too many questions. Council Casenberg.
Um, Mr. Dare, thank you for your report. Uh, thank you, Mr. Warden. Um, maybe I'm getting too deep into the nitty-gritty here, but. Uh, with regards to the vehicle purchase, I assume that you're considering a hybrid or electric options with regards to uh. That next purchase, just in the interest of furthering the county's environmental work.
Through the Warden, uh, thank you for the comment. Um, that's uh, something that we could certainly advance and look at those options.
That discussion would have to play, take place with John as well.
Yeah, I would think so.
Seeing as he's in charge of the last section. Counselor Hurley.
Just add to that a bit. We always need to make sure as, as much as we want to be environmental friendly, we have to focus. Now, the hybrid seem to be holding up pretty well. Diesel options have treated us over the years and with all the different regions. We do got to remember of. This. Of all, and we have pretty much as well, so, thank you.
Other comments or questions? Not seeing any. But I'm in here. I have a motion. Perth County Council receives the paramedic services municipal shared services committee. Financial forecast projection for two thousand and twenty-one for information. And then a council approved the report for submission to the November eighteenth, two thousand and twenty-one meeting. Of the municipal shared services committee meeting. Moved by council, excuse me, moved by Council Wilhelm, seconded by. Council Casper. Last chance for questions. Those in favor. That's carried. Perfect. Okay, we're going to move on to council reports. Uh, and we have first joint accessibility advisory committee. Request for support and I was just thinking you were, Sean was doing that.
Yep, so I'll take that one. So through the Warden, uh, the joint accessibility advisory committee held a meeting on Tuesday, September twenty-eighth. Uh, the committee received a presentation brought forward by the advocacy group Action Not Words. Um, Action Out Words brought forward. That the effects of the pandemic has had uh, significant impacts on persons with disabilities and more specifically. Other inability to find appropriate housing. So within the, the report as well as the attachment from Action Out Words. Um, they point out that community-based living is lacking in many parts of Ontario and thousands of persons with disabilities are living in long-term care residences. Uh, with that being said, there are several different points that they made, couple of different options that they've provided or what they're advocating for. Is that the government provides additional funding to individuals with disability, uh, disabilities. To create like a uh, specific home care fund so persons with disabilities can stay at home and access services. So the JNEC or Joint Accessibility Advisor Committee uh, supports a position of Action Out Words. And will be prepared to provide a joint letter of support with Perth County Council.
Okay, so you've heard that from Tyler and you also have that in your package. Any comments or questions on that? Counselor Hurley?
Oh, no, it's, it's interesting to, you know, as I have my community well-being book here, you know, you look in there. The true cause of this pandemic and what it's done, mental illness and everything, you know, we spend literally millions. Here we are again, hinging back to big brother, the government, more money. I don't see nothing about the family unit and community, the way it should be, the way it was at one time, local churches and people. Always come back for more money, more money. I, I look at taxes, I look at, you know, where, where MPAC is going to have our, our residential in the next few years after the election, of course, we'll wait to ask. Um, I just, I, I know we, we ought to be there for the community. I get that. But we need more involvement and we need to get things opened back up so we can have our churches, we can have, you know, more engagement. Nobody tiptoeing around. You just seem to be hinging everything, the big brother, which is the government. And maybe that'll lead us. That's my thoughts. We'll go from there. Thank you.
Comments or questions? I don't see any hands. I have a motion. The Perth County Council received the joint accessibility advisory committee. Request for support report. And Perth County Council submit a joint letter of support. To the Action Not Words Abyss Advocacy Group. Moved by Council Casenberg, seconded by. Do I have a second here for that? Oh, Counselor Wright, there he is. Sorry Doug. Okay, so I have a motion on the floor. Uh, last chance for questions or comments. Deputy Warden Aggots.
I just want clarification. We are supporting that. More places are needed, right? We're not supporting that, we're giving funds. Correct?
So, so through the Warden, that's correct. Uh, you're supporting the initiatives brought forward by advocate or, sorry, Action Out Words and not uh, any guaranteed funds.
Okay, this is, they're talking about funding in there, so, thank you.
Yeah, this, this doesn't mean we're going to submit funds, only support. Written support, I better rephrase that. Okay, I have a motion, it's been moved and seconded. Those in favor. Oh, that's carried. No problem. Perfect. And next, we're going to move on to the committee on affordable and attainable housing work plan. And. Brian Erb's going to come in and speak to this. Who's the chair of the committee?
Morning, Ryan.
Good morning. Can everyone hear me okay?
Yeah, we're ready and good to go.
All right, thank you. I just missed uh, some of the commentary on the transition. Um, so, uh, thank you for the opportunity to be here. Uh. Uh, worship and council members, staff, it's always a pleasure to come to county council. Uh, this time on behalf of the committee on affordable and attainable housing, uh, which I am the chair. So you'll see in the report uh, that the committee has been busy since its inception, uh, November the thirtieth of twenty twenty. Uh, first of all, doing some education, receiving uh, uh, information from outside sources, whether it was other counties or um. Other organizations and trying to learn as best it could about the issues of affordable and attainable housing in the region. Uh, then it turned its attention to trying to create a work plan uh, that would uh, provide guidance to this council uh, going forward as its, as its mandates, uh, as its mandate indicates. Uh, the work plan is attached for your review and it um, essentially goes through uh, three, three significant areas. Um, if you, if you reach to that section of the presentation, we've got an education. Area, policy area and a project innovation stream within the work plan. Uh, the committee has discussed thoroughly of this uh, particular uh, work plan and has consulted thoroughly also with staff from uh, the county and uh, social services. Uh, so you'll see under the education section, there's some action oriented items there. Uh, where the idea is to uh, gather information and disseminate that information about. Opportunities uh, for the private sector to build affordable housing. Uh, needing to understand and promote the opportunities that do exist is, is a significant portion of what's here. There's also a section that takes action around perhaps a campaign that uh, can help to reduce stigma around affordable housing. Uh, it could be something like a yes in my backyard campaign and there are other. Uh, it could be something like a yes in my backyard campaign, and there are other other efforts that are underway that this group could join. It continues to uh, provide support uh, to the work of your C S M around their housing forums and other other efforts that they make uh, in this education section. Then we get to the advocacy piece, so there was lots of discussion about challenges that uh, that this council and other lower tier councils have faced around policy. Um, and some suggestions there about the possibility of of working with a consultant to do deep a deeper dive into those issues and provide guidance perhaps uh, through uh, written material upstream uh, to the provincial government. In the uh, other next section, uh, we're talking about some policy pieces, uh, earlier, of course, the conversation was around the official plan at your meeting. And uh, I just want to reiterate that this uh, committee is committed to being a part of that process, we know that this is an opportunity to uh, promote the mandate of affordable and attainable housing and would uh, certainly want the opportunity as part of that process, which uh, the planning staff have already agreed to. Um, and we're interested as a committee to understand further and tracking current inventory of housing and available potential secondary units, those kinds of things uh, as part of that piece. In the development section here, uh, we're talking about supporting uh, the Community Improvement Plan uh, efforts that are already underway from uh, from staff and we're interested to see how we can support economic development tourism as they move some of these pieces forward um, and give uh, feedback and support to them. And finally, uh, in the last section, we have uh, more research to be done, so some base research would be done in in the first section and then some additional research to be done about opportunities where perhaps uh, we can look at uh, additional investments and or incentives that might come along with things beyond the Community Improvement Plan to encourage people to uh, build affordable and attainable housing in this region. Um, you can see throughout the uh, plan that the refers to um, the notion of a new F T E. Um, it was discussed thoroughly with staff uh, that moving this particular project forward will require additional investment. Um, staff simply do not have time to move all of the projects within this plan uh, within their current mandate, uh, current uh, pressures that they have from their job, and so it's the understanding of the committee that um, we need to uh, refer this back to staff for some consideration about the costs um, associated with putting together a plan like this, which we need to come back to council and perhaps then be uh, referred to budget as part of your discussion, so I'm happy to answer any questions as well as other committee members who are in the room uh, on behalf of the committee at this point in time.
Thank you, Ryan. Questions for Ryan on regard with regards to this report? Counselor Wilhelm.
Well, first off, I would like to congratulate Ryan and and committee on on doing a great job and and uh, I think uh, when we started out, um, didn't know where we were gonna go or how we were gonna get there, and I certainly congratulate John on uh, achieving that goals. The one thing I've always thought that for affordable and attaining housing requires a lot of input and uh, requires lower tiers along with social services to be involved to make this happen. And I understand, and I don't know any details, but I understand that North Perth has put something together with social services towards this end, and I congratulate John moving forward with that, and I like to think that uh, this committee was part of the inspiration to get this going, and so I really congratulate you and good luck on on that, uh, and we look forward to hearing more details. The other thing I'd like to comment is that uh, this requires some financial input from the county as far as one F T E, and I would like to refer that to budget.
Other questions or comments? I'm not seeing any hands go up, so I have a motion here, I'm gonna actually add a little bit to it. My motion says that Perth County Council received the Committee on Affordable and Attainable Housing Work Plan Report. And I'm gonna add and that this be referred to budget or consideration to move forward.
Mister, Mister Warden, if I might on a point of um, of order, um, I think um, there's one matter here, and that was that that this is the the so called interim report that this council was to receive um, in terms of allowing the committee to continue its mandate. And um, so and and maybe I'm incorrect, Ryan, correct me if I'm wrong, but it was around this time that we were to receive a report and determine whether the committee was viable beyond this, I think that seeing the work plan uh, seeing and having participated uh, richly in the discussions and collaboration with my colleagues here on County Council and in other places that we may need to amend this motion as well to indicate the County Council uh, supports the continuance of the work of this committee.
Okay, somebody want to amend the motion that I read? Counselor Katzenberg, did I see your hand go up?
Absolutely.
Do I have a second or? Counselor Kellum. So the motion now will read, we received the report on a committee of attainable, affordable and attainable housing, and refer any financial implications to budget. And we recommend that the committee continue with their mandate. And you can word that a little more smoothly, but I'm just running off the cuff here. So uh, I do have a mover and a seconder. Last chance for questions on that motion or comments. Those in favor of that motion? That's carried, we're good to go. Thanks, Ryan. And we shall move on. Um, Swift Director Selection for two thousand and twenty two. And we do have a copy of that letter in our package. And a bit of a report, um. I think Lori, is Lori coming on to speak to that? You listen up there, Lori?
Um, hello, yes, I'm here and uh, I can speak to this, so Swift, this is a housekeeping matter for us to um, either confirm or or our current representative or to put a new representative on uh, for the next two year period, and um, my understanding, we followed up with Swift uh, to double check that if we had a member that was selected uh, that was not coming back on council for either um, uh, being defeated or if they they're stepping down, that uh, they indicated we could submit a request at that time for consideration to put a a new member on for the balance of that two year term.
That would go through Western Ontario Wardens and then to Swift?
Uh, yeah.
How that works?
That's my understanding, because for uh, Western Ontario Warden supports Swift, it's an initiative of Western Wardens. But we would, we would communicate directly with Swift.
Okay. Thanks, Lori. Okay, so any questions for Lori on this? Okay, so our representative to this vote, Counselor Deputy Warden Eggers.
If we're going to appoint someone to this committee, then I expect that we get reports, because we haven't been getting any reports, and they're they're representing us, so we need to know what's going on, the only time we hear about Swift is when Barry seems to come to the meetings, so I would like uh, report after every meeting that uh, whoever goes to this board that they bring something back to this uh, county.
Okay, Counselor Casper.
I will point out to Deputy Warden Eggers that um, Barry Swift does send out a monthly report that I believe is circulated to all the C A Os of the official members of Swift, so I believe that um, Ms. Wolf would receive that monthly report and could circulate that uh, because it is prepared for the purposes of of public consumption.
Okay, so at present, Counselor Casper is our representative on that board. So, we need to either reappoint Todd or it's the wishes of council as to what they want. So I need somebody to give me some direction, Counselor Hurley. Okay, so you're gonna move to reappoint Todd, Counselor Casper? Can't hear, can't hear you.
Yes, that that that's fine, I'll move that if.
Okay, I had trouble understanding you're a little garbled there. Uh, do I have a second or to that? That would be Counselor Kellum. Okay, so we have a motion to reappoint Counselor Casper to the Swift Board. It's movement seconded. Uh, any comments or questions? Those in favor of that motion, that would be carried, lovely. We're gonna move on, bylaws. Don't have any, except for the confirmatory at the end. Uh, notice of motions. Don't see any. Moving on to other business, and this is where we get to the warden, deputy warden nominations. So uh, I'll start that off. Um, after careful consideration and calls from fellow counselors and different people, I'm going to submit my name for warden for a third year. And people may think that's a little odd. But uh, I'm gonna be honest with you. The last two years has been a bit of a ride, last year was worse than this year. And I would honestly like to do this, and a couple of counselors that pointed out and past wardens have phoned me, said you should try that job in one year of normalcy. And I don't see that being normal until maybe at least April. But I'm hoping maybe next summer might be. And the example, the Western Ontario Wardens, which I've been on now for almost two years. I've been to one in person function, and that was at Roman in two thousand and twenty, that's just how that job's changed. It does take a lot of time, but I'm willing to commit it for one more year. So I'm putting my name in and then I'm gonna go around the table, I just thought I'd tell you that upfront, I'm pretty upfront. Counselor McKenzie, I'm gonna start in the room here.
Okay, well, um, I really uh, have nothing uh, further to add, uh, I I agree with you, it would be nice to get back to normal. Um, at at some point in time, hopefully sooner than later, but uh, no, I uh, no, I don't think I have anything much else to add, uh. I'm one of the few people that shows up in person here and and I find that I get more out of it when I'm in person than than when I'm zooming, so let's do it. Yeah, I'll just leave it at that.
Counselor Kellum.
Thank you, and I think that is fantastic, and I support you a hundred percent, I have spoken to constituents in North Perth, and they have said the same thing, and we're hoping you stick around and we'll see you at the parade in July.
That'd be kinda nice, but to be honest with it, I have spoken to some of your past counselors and they phoned me up and whatnot, and it's been, you know, interesting and anyway, Counselor Wilhelm.
That sounds good to me.
Okay, so then I'm gonna go to the screen, and don't you guys start moving around on me, or I'm gonna forget somebody. Deputy Warden Eggers.
Jim, uh, it's been a good year. Thanks for running again, thanks for all you've done in the past, I know you spend an awful lot of time uh, being the warden right now, there's always phone calls and everything else, and I didn't hear Walter or Doug. Oh, Wilhelm, I didn't hear anybody say that they would run for deputy.
No, I I'll get to deputy after we do the warden thing.
Okay, good, all right, well.
Okay, Counselor, you're not, so you're not submitting your name for Counselor Hurley, I seen your hand go up next.
Yeah, no, there, no, it sounds good there, Warden, um, I'll I'll support you as well, I I I hope and dream of having some normalcy, um, I hope it can happen, however, if anybody's watching the media these days in the World Economic Forum, they're they're telling us it's inevitable that a super bug is going to massive cybersecurity attack ever, so I mean, it's coming, so, you know, don't don't hold your breath too much there that we're going back to normal, um.
Sometimes. I'm not gonna, I'm not gonna say normal, I'm gonna say the new normal.
Yeah, it's just telling us to warn us, so they they tend to be right, actually, with
Counselor Duncan.
Thank you, Warden, I'm fully in support of you running again.
Thank you, Counselor Wright.
I I think it should be more this way, I'm not gonna run against you. I'm not saying I'm in sporty, but I'm not gonna run against you, Jim.
Okay, whatever you want. Counselor McDermott.
I wish you the the best, Jim, and I you have my full support.
Counselor Casper.
Mister Warden, see this this increased gray hair, it it comes from being mayor, uh, at this point, I don't need to be warden, that's for sure, so I'm happy that you get to earn some gray hair as well and uh, look forward to continuing to support you in your work.
It's nice, not not only have I got gray hair, Todd, I don't have that much hair. And somebody said to me one day, you must be pulling your hair out, I said, it's pretty well all gone. Okay, so I don't see anybody that intends to submit for warden other than myself, so I guess that's a done deal. Okay, so I'm gonna move on to Deputy Warden. And then I will start again back in the room, any Deputy Warden, Walter?
Well, I think uh, I don't know what Rhonda's intentions are, I think, you know, I've certainly went through the mill and then uh, and I have experienced being Deputy Warden and also being Warden, and um, I guess if nobody else was interested in it, and I might consider it, but I think we've got enough up and coming people that would be able to fill that position.
Okay, I'm actually gonna stop the truck there, uh, Deputy Warden Eggers is interested in doing one more year.
Okay.
Confirm Deputy Warden Eggers, you do wanna do one more as deputy?
I would do one more, but I, as I've said before, I won't guarantee that I will go up as warden after, but I will run again for deputy.
Okay, so we do have one, Counselor Wilhelm?
No, I think the warden out of herself was good enough, thank you.
Counselor Kellum. I echo his comments.
Uh, Counselor Wright.
Well, so that's the question is, are you gonna run? No, thank you.
Counselor McDermott.
I think Rhonda's doing an excellent job and I fully support her.
Counselor Duncan.
No, I will not be putting my name forth.
Counselor Casper.
Same gray hair, that's a that's a no.
Same no here, Counselor Hurley.
Well, I've got a house full of toddlers and, yeah, I I got enough action. On the road though, hey, you never know, um, I I do admire and it's respectable work and I I just finished off the pod you as well here, uh, Deputy Warden Eggers for holding in there, it's a lot. Um, it's interesting, um, no, I will not be throwing my name in the bag.
Okay, perfect, that eliminates an election on first of December. So Deputy Warden Eggers, it looks like you're gonna be confirmed as the Deputy Warden. And I gotta admit that Rhonda's been a lot of help off and on, she's had to attend a couple of things and when I get four meetings going at once, she's filled in for the odd one for me here. You know, this has been a difficult fall for my profession of farming, and Walter can attest to that, and Daryl and you probably and Rhonda, but uh, there's a couple times when I've been we should be combining corn and or beans and you'd be in a meeting and it it's hard to make it all work, but uh, I do enjoy it, except for those days when I got eight things on at once, I gotta admit. And further to that comment, I I look forward to being the warden in the next year. But I can pretty well guarantee with certainty that will be my last one. Because I thought maybe in the summertime I was pretty near burning out, but I seem to have rallied around. And I will do it for one more year, and I'll do the best I can for one more year. But I'm pretty sure come the next municipal election, and that'll actually work well, because then you can go into a new term of council, because we sort of said it was two year terms, so you can start fresh with a two year term at the beginning of next council. Does that work for everyone? And nobody say no, so perfect, we're gonna move on. So, any announcements? Seeing none, so we do have to move into closed session in accordance with section two thirty nine of the Municipal Act as a closed session. Act pertaining to, and I got four things here, a matter pertaining to labor relations. A matter pertaining to legal advice. a matter pertaining to legal advice, potential litigation, uh, public works and roads, a matter pertaining to security of municipal property slash negotiations, public works, a matter pertaining to security of municipal property IT, and another one uh, through the order, a matter pertaining to information explicitly supplied in confidence. Okay, do I have a mover and a seconder, moved by Counselor Kellam, second by Counselor Casenberg to go into closed session? We are going to take a ten-minute break because we
Oh. There's a follow-up from, uh, last evening, where we had our representation from MPAC. And, uh, we had talked about, uh, setting up a delegation at Roma or Good Roads with the ministers, I just wondered if that was following up or not, because I think that's important, uh, we discussed that at our West Perth meeting the other night. And I came out with the same, uh, conclusion that we need to talk to the ministers about, uh, about, uh, moving this along and quit kicking it down the road.
Um, so I can comment on that, I did actually flag your issue for further discussions with Lori.
Okay, excellent, good. Well, I know they're, they're taking delegations now, um, so, you know, even if we get our name in there to whoever we want to talk to, we can always cancel it later if we wanted to, but I think it's important to get in front of their face and have a chat with them.
Tyler's gonna speak to that as well.
Sure, uh, so through the order, just to kind of go on that as well, so we did receive an email from Roma um, with their deadline to submit request for November fifteenth, so, um, I'll work with that and Lori to ensure that we get that in.
Good, excellent.
Okay, second question, seeing as we talked about MPAC, Counselor Casenberg was gonna submit questions after last meeting.
So through, through the order, you are accepting questions from any member of council and, uh, any questions that we did receive, we forward off to, uh, county staff and or, uh, MPAC has requested.
And we've heard no response from MPAC?
Uh, through the order, I haven't heard any response yet, Corey is online, Corey would like to speak to that, but.
No, the MPAC has the questions that were submitted and they are, my understanding, working on, uh, providing responses. I do not know if they've reached out to Counselor Casenberg related to a MPAC one-on-one session.
His head's shaking, no.
Okay, I will follow up with Ann Haynes at MPAC.
Okay. Now we're moving on to confirmatory bylaw number three eight four two dash two oh two one. Being a bylaw to confirm the proceedings of the council, the corporation, the county of Perth, and its regular meeting held November fourth two thousand and twenty-one is ready, first, second, and third time, and finally passed November fourth, two thousand and twenty-one. And that was moved by Walter and I need a second, Counselor Wilholt? What was the favor? Gary. And the last motion is that County Council be adjourned at eleven fifty-nine, moved by Counselor Kellam, seconded by Counselor Casenberg, he had his hand up before. What was the favor? Gary, thank you very much for your indulgence.